Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education regular virtual meeting of September fifteenth. We'll have a call to order, starting with the pledge of allegiance, and then a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Shirley Rogers, who was one of our cooks and bus monitors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Ruth?
And Mr. Shea.
President.
Mrs. Kennedy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Mrs. Miller, you're muted.
Mrs. Molnar, I got you. Mrs. Molnar.
Here.
And Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
Okay, item number three, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Hey, Carol, before we make a motion for that, I'd like to make a motion to move item five, the staff and community recognition, to next meeting. We have the school reopening discussions to attend to, and I know we have several community members that are awaiting the discussion. So I was hoping to just move that to the next meeting, since I know Tricia is scheduled to give a presentation.
So you don't want to, you don't want to recognize the two employees?
Well, we can recognize the two employees, but I would recommend to move Tricia's presentation to the next meeting.
I guess the only thing I would say is it was only going to be a minute or two, just kind of a nice little update, but it's up to the board, obviously.
And she's prepared, so.
Okay.
Do you have any, any other feelings on the board? Just go ahead, Mr. Kennedy, you said, okay?
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead. But one thing, I did want to make a motion to move the superintendent's report up to item seven, immediately following public participation, as the majority of his report is focusing on school reopening. I think it's important we get to that topic sooner.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
All right, so adopt the agenda as adjusted would be Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes, okay, so.
Carol, I got a few other things here, sorry. I would like to make a motion to add as item F under new business.
Wait, 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 stop. Mrs. Ruth, would you please reread the motion? Was it to adopt as adjusted?
All right, I did say it was to adopt as adjusted, that's my fault, because I didn't, I thought that was the only adjustment. So that is what we voted on.
So we adopted as adjusted?
Yeah, is that not what we wanted?
No, because we have to, no, we have to vote on each item to add it to the, to move and add to the agenda.
All right.
So all that vote did was move that item up the agenda, and anything we add or move has to be individually voted on by the board.
So everybody agreed to add the superintendent's report?
Okay.
Sure. Okay, that's, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to add as item F under new business. After all discussions take place, to add a vote on to tonight's agenda for returning to school five days per week by September twenty eighth.
I'll second that.
Okay, bear with me, I'm writing it out. Okay, so we have a motion by Keith to put on the agenda item F, seconded by Jeff.
Under new business.
New business. To have a motion for us to return to school five days a week by September twenty eighth, that's not real pretty, but we can make it sound better. Five days a week by seven twenty, okay.
By nine twenty eight.
Oh, I have nine twenty eight, I, I, properly, excuse me, by September twenty eighth.
Discussion, you say that?
No, I think you say, now we have to call for the roll, and other than that, we're going to allow this to be added.
Did we have a second on that?
Yeah, Jeff seconded it.
Second, but then we do a discussion?
Add it to the agenda?
Edit, I would think we have to do discussion for anything we, we do, that's a motion. So my question is, you want that on there prior to having the superintendent's report on what?
No, it's on new business, that's why I wanted to move Hal's report up, so we could have our open discussion following the superintendent's report, and then vote on the aspect.
Okay, you, we do not have to vote on the return to school, that decision can be done by the superintendent. It's nothing that we have to vote on?
We did vote to go remote, is that correct?
Correct, but we don't have to vote, we do not have to do it, so that's just, I'm just throwing it out there, just throwing it out there.
But still, my, my thought process is, I think that the board supersedes the administration, I'd like to take the time to listen first to the public participation, listen to Hal and his principles, and as we go through the survey information, and I think we'll have enough information after our conversations to make an educated decision, once we get to new business.
Okay, further discussion?
The only thing I'll add is, like, you are correct, Carol, and that we don't have to vote, but my thought is, we voted go remote, so the board should take action, I guess, to come out of, just for consistency, even though we don't legally have to, I think it'd be good for consistency to bring us out with the board vote.
That's fine, I just wanted, I just wanted it known, we didn't have to.
I appreciate that.
Further discussion? Okay, so we are voting on whether to bring back students by September twenty eighth.
No, we're.
No, we're just voting to add it to the agenda.
Add it, that's all we're adding to the agenda.
Adding it as, as item F on the agenda, five days per week by September twenty eighth. Okay, so now we, any further discussion than roll call?
Okay, Keith.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yeah.
Mr. Shea.
No.
Mrs. Miller. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mrs. Miller.
Oh.
Oh, okay, and then Mrs. Molnar.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Madam President, one more motion, I'd like to add a motion to add, I'll, I guess I'll make this item F, since that was just shot down, I was going to make it item G, but I'll make it item F, under new business, for the Board of Education to return to live in-person meetings to be held at Clay High School, immediately following this meeting, and continue to have the meetings livestreamed.
So you want to do that ahead of the discussion on number sixteen?
It would go under new business, item F.
Right, and it would be new business, and we wouldn't have had the discussion that's under item sixteen? And now, it's under announcement of special and regular meetings, there would be a discussion of virtual versus in-person board meetings? So.
I would like a resolution for us to vote on it to return, as opposed to just having a discussion.
Okay, so that's the motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Discussion? To add it to the agenda? So that's item.
So I'm back to item F, if that's, is this under new business? So it's item F, since we didn't add the other one.
Right.
All right, so are you, are we ready for roll call? I'm sorry, I shouldn't rush you.
Yes, I was just writing down the resolution.
Okay. Keith.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Mike.
No.
Heather.
No.
And Carol.
No.
And then, Madam President, I have one question on the agenda, this is not a change, I just had a question on it before we adopted. It appears we have two conflicting resolutions on the agenda, under new business. Items E. Items E. One is to partially recall and reinstate non-teaching employees in positions that have been subject to a reduction in force. It is a resolution to recall three employees, and then we have a resolution under item E, to recall all of the non-teaching employees at a hundred percent as of September fifteenth. Obviously, the item E would supersede the item D, I was just wondering why we're voting on two different resolutions.
We really need to have item D on there, because those three people absolutely must be coming back, because their positions are in need in the district. If, and, and if we do D, and we do E, and if E passes, we're fine, it makes no difference. But if E doesn't, if we didn't have D on there and only had E, then those three people couldn't come back, if that would go down, if it would pass, it would be fine, but if it would go down, then those three people couldn't come back when we're needed.
Okay, so it's a protection in the case that item E will not be passed this evening?
Correct, correct.
Would it make more sense to flip-flop them, that way if E passes, there's no need for D?
I don't, does it make me, I don't, I don't think so, I think it's fine just the way it is.
All right, thank you.
Unless somebody else, is there further discussion? I'm not here to make the decision, is there further discussion on that, would you, if anybody else want to flip-flop?
I would agree, I mean, it makes sense, if E passes, then we don't need to vote on D, so I, I mean, we could move, I can make a motion to move item D to, or item E to D and D to E.
My, my recommendation is to keep it the same, because of the way the motions were printed and the way we, again, I'm not voting on this, obviously you guys are, but my recommendation is keep the agenda and the addendum the same.
I'll second Keith's motion.
Shoot, okay, okay, so.
Yeah, Keith's motion is to.
Flip-flop them, flip-flop them.
E and E.
Correct.
Okay, so Keith's motion, Jeff's second, all right. So are you guys ready to vote, or should I?
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess, go ahead and vote.
Mr. Shea.
Oh.
Mrs. Miller.
Oh.
And Mrs. Molnar.
No.
Are there two more votes yet?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Sorry, I should have called you first, Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Sorry, I was writing all the names down, this is a lot.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, um, so.
Now we need a motion for number four, since I looked that up.
Got the agenda as a, as adjusted.
Adjusted.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller. And Mrs. Molnar.
Yes. Okay, moving to staff and community recognition, Mr. Gregory, you want to take over that, please?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Molnar, certainly, as you said earlier, we'd like to thank two of our employees, Dana Reichert and Pam Ray, Pam Everay, for their many years of support in our district, and, and we certainly wish them the best moving into their retirement. We also just have Mrs. Soltes, principal at Star Elementary, who I just wanted to have in front of the board, just to give a brief, you know, overview of a grant that she's been working on in partnership with the Ohio Department of Ed, and then working through our local committee, so Tricia, if you would talk a little bit about this K-12 Prevention Education Initiative, and just try to give a brief overview and, and, and what it'll do for our district.
Okay, the amount awarded was over thirty-six thousand dollars that we'll have for the district, and it's going to serve students K through six, also their families and teachers, and the school counselors, so they'll get a piece, a little bit of, of the grant in different ways. So right now, I'm serving on the District Mental Health Committee with Dee Kosick and Lori Beveridge, and we had, prior to COVID, we had several meetings about what the needs are for the buildings, and so with this grant, what I did is I tried to focus on the elementary, but also the five-sixth, and with this grant, it will give us monies for PD for the elementary buildings, for all three elementary buildings. It will provide program access to Teach Town, which Dee Kosick and Lori Beveridge have investigated in at the beginning of last year, and we were just trying to find ways to fund it, so this will be available for students K through six, and it will help our special needs population. And then we'll also have one area that I had talked with Amy Drescher about, was after-school programs for parents and families and students to, to try to, to work on social skills and anxiety, stress, of that, and do something after school, and she was willing to work with me on something like that, well, this gives us the monies to do that. And another program that we want to implement is the mindfulness for classrooms, and right now Jerusalem is doing something similar to what Koy and Star want to do, so then all three of us will all be on the same page and have access to the same supplies, and, and this also gives us money for the supplies as well. But that's basically what the grant is, and, and that was what our goal was with Dee and Lori, is to increase the resources for the district, for families, students, teachers, and school counselors, and it'll also give us, the other thing it will give us too, is a universal screener and different climate surveys for the school counselors to use, and so that they can better serve their buildings, which we don't have right now, so. But that's the nuts and bolts. I can type it up and send it to you guys, too.
Thank you, Tricia, that's what I kind of just wanted to hear, thirty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money, and, and you worked hard to, to put that together and, and bring that to our district, and obviously, we, we talk a lot about mental health, and certainly COVID, and, and what we're all going through, mental health is, is not going away, and, and kids, and, and all of us need that kind of support, and so I'm really looking forward to, to getting that program underway, and again, thank you, and Dee, and Lori, and now anybody else that, that worked hard on that to bring that money in, so I appreciate you presenting tonight, any questions by the board?
Thank you, Trish.
Okay, good, thank you, Tricia.
Okay, so, moving on to public participation at meetings, we have a half an hour set aside for that, no more than a half an hour, and Mr. Gregory, he has a number of emails that he has gone through, and he will be presenting them.
Yeah, just, you know, obviously, we, we've been holding these meetings virtual, and, and haven't really had, you know, the same type of public participation, and, and so obviously, with the topic tonight, you know, there was, there was a, a pretty heavy email campaign that came into my inbox today, with people that are very much in support of coming back in person, so it started last night, you know, mid-evening, and, and it has been going throughout the evening, throughout the day, so I have quite a few emails, maybe about twenty-five emails that came into my inbox, certainly will not have the ability to get through even close to those as public participation, but I did pick out ten that I thought I would read, I'm going to read them, now, just in, in, traditionally, we have the person, the person comes up in a public meeting, they state their name and their address, and they, and they share their thoughts. Well, obviously, that isn't happening right now, and the, and really, only two out of about the twenty-five that I got had addresses on them. So I'm not going to use the names of any of the people that wrote them, but I'm just going to read them for the content, which I think is the point of, of what we're trying to get accomplished here, so.
Now, if I can interrupt before we get going, the agenda shows we got thirty minutes, and the board can vote to extend that if needed. I don't know if you can arbitrarily just say you're going to read ten and not read them all until the time expires?
I'm certainly not going to read them all, I don't believe, I think that will be hours.
Well, we have thirty minutes, though, for the agenda that we adopted.
Again, I, I understand the point that's being made here, and, and I'm happy, but many, again, many of them don't have their, their addresses, I don't know if they're Oregon residents or not. I know some of the names, most I do not know, so why don't you let me read these, and we'll see where we're at at the end? Does that sound fair?
That makes sense. See how far we are into our time.
Okay. So we will end, I guess, in thirty, or about twenty-five minutes, twenty-eight minutes, whatever it is, from here, and I can just read, I'd be happy to read, I'm going to hit my start button, got it going, so we'll kind of see where we're at here at the end, so sit back and enjoy my reading ability, okay? All right, here's just the first one, some of them are longer, some of them are short, just kind of depends on, on the, the writing. And it'll be a good lead into the survey that we have in my, my report that I'm going to do, because there's a lot of questions that are in some of these that I can kind of come back to and address. So first one here, so Superintendent Gregory and the Oregon Board of Education, I am a parent of two students at Facet Junior High School, and I strongly urge you to consider having all attend, all students attend school in person full-time. My wife and I both work for healthcare systems in Northwest Ohio, and although we are not frontline caregivers, we have been working in our office buildings through the entirety of the pandemic. I believe the plan your administration has outlined for students to return to school is more than sufficient to keep our students safe, and the benefits of being able to learn in person vastly outweigh the potential risks that come with it. So that's the first one. And again, these are individual opinions, not necessarily the opinions of the board or any individual, or, or me, we're just, these are individual community members.
Now, if you could please start from the commentary and just read, you're kind of taking up time by doing that, we know it's public participation, not the boards, this is the public that sent these in, thank you.
Will do. Dear school board, I am sending this email regarding our children to be able to return to school the beginning of October. My daughter is losing interest in school, she is showing no motivation towards her schoolwork. I, I have listened to several lessons, and it seems like there is no interaction between the teacher and students. I feel she is going to fall way behind, and there will be no way to get her caught up. There is no reason they are not back full-time. All other schools in our area are back in class. They are having no issues returning back. This virus, like all other viruses, will not go away. The kids can wear masks, have temps taken, and keep hands washed. Please put our children back in school, this is not healthy for them, I want to go back, they want to go back. Good evening. I'd like to first say I absolutely appreciate everything you and the administrators do for our schools. During these crazy times, I know and understand how hard life has been. I was happy to receive a survey last week, looking for input on going back to school. With four kids in the school system, ranging from first grade to freshman, we have dealt with all levels of remote learning. I can tell you that has been, that it has been a struggle for both my wife and I, and more so for our children. I never thought I'd see the day my kids were crying, because they want to be in school. We understand that the risks, that the risks, but we've, we've gone all summer at baseball tournaments, soccer practices, and our full swing into sports schedules, and everyone is staying healthy. Their cousins and friends in other districts are back in school, and they can't understand why they aren't. We feel as great of a school system that we have, we should be one of those districts that can make it work for everyone involved. Dear Mr. Gregory, I am writing you today as a concerned parent who loves this district as a whole. I see every day how hard you and the staff are working around the clock to protect our students and community. For that, I thank all, thank you all from the bottom of my heart, and know that you have all the students' best interests at heart. My concern is that once October fifteenth comes around, and hopefully, it's time to re-enter our buildings, our kids will be so excited to be back, that they forget to adhere to the new way, quote, new way of schools' protocols. As much as I want to see students back in school, I also want to make sure they are safe. I would really like to see them going back on a hybrid plan and becoming accustomed to the protocols before they are all together. I would hate to see students go back five days a week, and then have an outbreak of COVID that sends them back to square one. Hybrid would enable students to phase in, and if there are issues, it would be easier to go back virtual. I have discussed with my kids, as much as they want to be in school, miss their teacher and friends, they don't want to jump, jumped in and out of school, jump in and out of school. They like things being consistent, so they have what they, they're doing each day. Going from virtual to all-in will throw everything off for them, it would definitely have a negative impact if they were thrown back into virtual after only a couple of weeks, all-in. Please keep in mind that we are all truly all in this together. I truly believe that if we stick to the positive and stay together, we will get through this stronger. Good evening, Hal, it has come to our attention that even if kids can go back to school, it would only be two days a week. I'm not sure why we are not able to have our kids back in school full-time, I feel if they are missing out on so much education, I feel that they are missing out on so much education. Not to mention socially and mentally. I understand the concerns with COVID, but I feel like if we take all the necessary state-mandated precautions, we can keep our kids safe and back in school. Hal, good afternoon, I have several questions for tonight's meeting. Number one, the academy is a very limited option, as OCS has it, if the academy offers a variety of courses, why is OCS limiting them? For example, art, band, music, foreign language, etc., are all part of the academy's courses. Yet, OCS blocks us from taking those courses, why? Two, as we know, health is a semester course needed for graduation, if we start going in person before the semester ends, what happens to the students' credit for the first quarter? The, the academy's curriculum will not align with the OCS quarter. Three, my daughter was taken, has taken first-quarter GT. I understand that there is no outline GT course in the state of Ohio, what happens to the quarter credit, could OCS livestream these, it only seems fair. Four, the CDC has made studies on ventilation in buildings spreading COVID-19, has OCS looked into our buildings' ventilation systems? If so, what did they find, is it safe? I feel, I feel like I am now at a crossroad. I get the feeling OCS is trying to open with some sort of in-person learning for next quarter. I believe a full semester of remote learning should, should be what we do. Returning before the semester is going to interfere with the courses. I feel like the families who are at high risk and already at disadvantage are being pushed, I'm sorry, are being punished for not choosing to go in person. The ones going in person will be getting all the benefits of a good education. The ones going in person will be getting all the benefits of a good education, while the ones who want to keep their family safe are left with the crumbs. We as parents are talking amongst ourselves and I can assure you, I am not the only one who feels this way. We are frustrated. Some have mentioned Ohio Virtual Academy as they have teacher instruction and a variety of courses. I don't want to leave OCS, but we are facing a a wall at this point. Please consider live streaming for next quarter. The technology is there, teachers are basically doing it anyway. The academy is not a good option as it is. Okay. To the OCS School Board. As a mother and RN and community member, I beg of the board to pay attention to your community. As parents during a pandemic, we have struggled not only to keep our children healthy, but educated now as well. With a high school sophomore, I promise you this, it is not easy as you may think. With many distractions at his disposal, even a dedicated honor student can fall behind. Many schools, almost all in our area are already back to hybrid or full-time schedule. Please consider giving some credit to us parents for knowing what is best for our children. I completely understand there may be families that do not feel comfortable returning, and I feel they have every right to decide which is best for them and stay virtual. But the large majority of kids in the district deserve to go back and be taught by educated teachers in class, not exhausted working parents. I fear that this email will fall on deaf ears. I am an avid supporter of the district. My family contributes to OCS financially and with our time. Uh, when called upon, I believe our board needs to listen to its community. I also believe there is no reason we cannot go back sa- safely and quickly. The board dismissal of parent input will unfortunately cause good families to leave. Hal, hello Hal. Thank you for sending out the survey last week. I am very interested to see the results of how many parents want their kids physically back into the classroom and how many parents want their kids back in school five days a week. As a mom of four, one high schooler, one middle schooler and two elementary children, I am eager for my children to attend five full days a week as soon as possible. My children also would like to be back in the classroom with face-to-face teachers and with their peers. Luckily, my husband works from home and I'm a nurse, so I have a flexible work schedule. I am able, I am able help, I'm able to help my kids as much as possible as I, as much as I can. Unfortunately, I am not the best teacher. I wasn't trained for this, but I am doing my best. I believe all of the teachers are doing an amazing job with the classes and engaging the kids, but there is so much that is lost when kids are trying to learn at home rather than face-to-face in school. I am not worried about social distancing at this point. I believe the virus is real and understand the risks of sending my children to school. Fortunately, my kids are healthy and even if they were to contract the virus and they would either be asymptomatic or have very mild symptoms. My children wear masks in public and mask will not be an issue. I believe the mental effects are a bigger concern for my children than the physical effects. Thank you for taking the time to read my email. My children and myself are both looking forward to the day they can head back to school. Please consider allowing students back in the building. Dear Mr. Gregory, we have continued to appreciate your leadership and guidance as we have navigated this first first month of the school year. Our boys' teachers and administrators have been absolutely incredible and we are so thankful for all of their efforts. We completed the survey that was emailed to Oregon families but wanted to touch base with you after talking about our neighbors. Ideally, we would all love our kids back in school five days a week as close to our previous normal as possible. As quickly as possible. While this may take some time to achieve, we are all anxious to at least take steps forward in that direction in the short term. Thank you for continuing to lead our students, I'm sorry, thank you for continuing to leave our schools with heart. We appreciate you. Dear Mr. Gregory, let me begin by thanking you, Ms. Molnar, Mr. Shea, for being genuine in your actions concerning our kids in district. I believe that our kids should be going back to school on a hybrid program in October. I will give them time to adjust to the new COVID guidelines, give them time to adjust to being back with new rules. It will also give us time to watch the numbers, to clean the school. I know it's not going to be per- be perfect. I know kids and staff will be sick. Whatever can be done to minimize that should be done. So those were my ten emails that I read. So those are the ones that I had printed out, uh, that I went, um, clearly there's, there's other stories, there's other messages. But I I think the idea of of reading more, which I can do, uh, or we can jump into the discussion, which is, I think, what we really hope to get accomplished tonight. Thoughts?
I only say that again, the agenda as we approved says thirty minutes. I don't want to kill time, but the agendas, the agenda is the agenda.
No more than thirty minutes.
To cut it short by the board, I'm fine with that. But again, we can't change the agenda on the fly.
But we're not. It says no more than thirty minutes per public participation will be allotted, but it doesn't say that it's a minimum number.
No, but if all these people were live in person, they'd be coming up and taking, taking their turn to speak.
Correct, but I think.
Again, if the five, if the five of us want to say we're good, I, I don't want to make a board vote because it can't be a board vote on here. But again, we voted on the agenda. You, we can't, me and Keith would add the things we wanted to add if, if we're just able to change it on the fly.
I understand.
And and honestly, as Jeff said, they they would come up and speak if we were live and in person. So if these individuals felt strongly enough to email you, I, I don't, I mean, they want their voice to be heard, right? So.
But I'm not gonna be able to read everyone anyways, so. I'd like to hear from the other board members. I can pull up emails and start reading. Not trying to be an obstructionist in any way. I'm a realist at this point and I get what's going on and I understand that there's a lot of people that have feelings, strong feelings about going back to school. I I can read. If you want me to read. Or we can get into the meat and potatoes, which is the discussion that everyone's waiting on.
If they feel it's that important to read some more, Hal, why don't we read a few more?
Okay, give me a minute.
I'm not, I'm not into, you know, not agreeing with what the public wants and what Jeff and Keith want. So if if you have a few more that you can read and fill that time spot, I, I, it's gonna be the same rhetoric because I believe all of us already received those emails. And from the ones you read, I I don't think that there are very many that are saying anything different than those, other than some are in different professions than healthcare and whatnot. But if if they feel that will help by having a few more read, let's, let's go for it.
I'm not, Mike, I'm not saying I think it'll help having a few more read. I'm just saying, I mean, these individuals reached out asking to be part of public participation. So I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I I agree with you. I, you know, I'm not disagreeing that that's the process we go through. I, it's just, I think that Hal sorted through and tried to, you know, there were two that were the same. He he read one of the two and if if we feel better, Hal, just read some more.
Hey, I can read some more. Uh, I am sure you are flooded with emails and phone calls, so won't, I won't take much of your time. I would like to express my strong request to give parents the choice whether to send their school, their child back to school. There is the online option for parents that do not wish to do so, but I I completely disagree with one choice. And there is obviously quite a difference in opinions. Parents sign waivers for everything else for their child, so I do not see that this should be any different. I have been a nurse for twenty-six years, so I have quite a bit of medical background and feel it is beyond safe to let our children attend school and play sports for that matter. Thank you. Sure it's the right date. Mr. Gregory, I am encouraging you to send our children back to school full time. Lucas County has now dropped to orange. We were told that being in the red was a big factor in deciding to go online schooling. There are many other districts in our area, including many in our county that are going back full time. Many took actions immediately after Lucas County dropped to orange. Today, the governor also sound, signed HB House Bill six oh six when insured immunity uh, to schools from lawsuits arising from exposure, transmission or contraction of COVID. This online schooling is affecting our children mentally. The teachers are working extremely hard and I'm not faulting them whatsoever, but they are not getting even close to the quality of education they get in school. If the survey shows what I suspect it will, that the majority want to go back, please do not let the children and the community down. From what I gather, there is an overwhelming amount of people that want their children back in school. I have three children enrolled in OCS, two high schoolers and a middle schooler. I work a full-time job in the medical field Monday through Friday. My husband also works a swing shift full-time job. Every day I go to work, I worry about my kids getting, first getting up on time, staying awake, then getting signed into the right Zoom class in the right, the right Zoom call in the right class. Learning the material being taught, completing work, then finally submitting it correctly. Daily, I get messages from my sixth grader with frustration with teachers not in class on time. Or can't submit work or don't understand the lesson. Today's frustration text today, today's frustrated text today came after I asked her about her grades because I received failing grades posted on Power School. Then there's a text attached. Now at eight thirty at night, I'm going through YouTube videos of math lessons. My daughter is in tears because she doesn't understand. I'm exhausted from working all day then having to teach my child. These kids need to go back to school. Teachers are teachers to interact with children and teach. Enough is enough. Think I read that one. Trying to remember which ones I read. I'm writing this letter in hopes my, in hopes of getting my voice heard. Typically, I'm not one to write a letter of concern, but at the time I feel I need to. I am the mother of three children who attend Oregon schools, a fifth grader, a third grader and a kindergarten. I am a mother who works full-time at a small business I own in Oregon. My husband works full-time as well. I understand you are trying to do what is best for everyone. But I would, I wish you would give us as parents a choice. We are no longer in the red and neighboring communities are going back full-time. In-person edu-, in-person instruction with no issues. The schools are continuing to play sports, but we can't get our children back in the classroom. While at practices and games, our children are around the same people they would be in contact within the classroom. This does not make sense. My children are missing out on a lot of things. My son, who is starting kindergarten, is affected by the most, is affected the most. This is causing more stress on our family and children. They are not learning anything from a remote learning model. There are a multitude of issues and concerns. For example, the computers freeze. We are unable to find assignments and assignments are listed as missing when they are turned in. This is resulting in lower grades and affecting my children's self-esteem. Because my husband and I both work, they are going to my mother's house or with me to my workplace. They are expected to be on every Zoom meeting and that is impossible to make happen. My mother, who is on a fixed income, initially did not have internet. Because of the decision made by Oregon School District to keep children home to learn virtually, she had to purchase it. When reaching out to the schools for help regarding this matter, we were told that our kids would either miss out on instruction or marked as absent. At this time, I would like the voice of the parents to be heard and see the students back in general, back in school ASAP. Give the parents a fair choice. Going to school never used to be an option. Now that option has been taken away. If parents want their children back in the classroom, that option should be available just as fairly as if they don't want to stay remote. The children need to be back in classrooms and socializing. I am upset with the way Oregon Schools has handled this and concerned about the education they are missing. I did that one. Good afternoon, Mr. Gregory. In regards to the board meeting that will be held later today, I am writing with concerns I have with Oregon students learning virtually. As a parent of a fifth grader and a freshman, I do not feel that virtual learning is the best option for them. I am a single parent that works full-time and my children are finding that it is difficult to learn virtually. There are other school districts in Lucas County that have their, their students in class full-time. The governor recently dropped our status from red to orange, so I feel like this should be taken into consideration for opening our schools back up. That seems to have changed the back-to-school opening procedures for districts that were also using virtual school. It appears as though everything else in our area is open, even if it is with shortened hours. So many questions is why we are not sending our children to school. I feel school is the best place for them to learn, not at home. There are too many distractions, internet issues, and most parents are not teachers. We have found in our situation that learning from home is causing a lot of anxiety and frustration for both myself and my students. I believe that students are capable of abiding by the recommendations of wearing a mask and practicing social distancing. I'm asking you and the board members to please reconsider schools closed, keeping schools closed until October fifteenth and please reopen them full-time. Thank you in advance for taking this time to read my email and hope that the voices of myself and other concerned parents will be heard. I am the grandmother of two students in the Oregon district. I am the caregiver while their parents work. Thank God they still have jobs. Regarding the kids returning to school, I believe this is of significant importance that they return to school as soon as possible. Their get-up-and-go has gone, their desire to want more is gone. They're looking forward to the structure or routine of school. It is not gone, not to mention the interaction with their friends, teachers and others. Sports play a major role in our home and this, for the most part, is gone. I have four adult children and five grandchildren and they have all experienced colds, fevers, pneumonia, broken bones, etc. In this lifetime and rest assured they are as fine as most of us are. Thus creating natural immunity. Soon, the normal flu season will be upon us and the, and the panic will resume. It is natural for colds and influenza to come and go and to be passed around the purse, from person to person. A logical response would be to wash your hands, stay at home when sick, common sense. It is not natural for anyone to live in confined spaces and have life disrupted at the point of extreme and sometimes unrealistic circumstances. Fear is a natural thing, but not this fear. The fear of breathing or going outside or not having a mask. Where have you been? Quarantine, quarantine, quarantine. Fear is what started this whole thing. It's about control. Not one thing has, not, not one thing was mentioned or shut down for Ebola, H one N one, swine or bird flu. Other schools are doing well and I believe we getting, but I, we believe getting the kids back in school ASAP is a dire need before the kids need psychological care from depression, anxiety, PTSD, etc. One thing we do not do is entertain the media propaganda. It's very unhealthy. If we believe everything they say on TV, we. If we believe everything they say on TV, we would all be crazy. I, we are asking for your sincere consideration and making a wise and moral decision for the kids to return to normalcy. Thank you for your time.
Hal, I believe that's about thirty minutes. I don't know if there's more to read or if we want to keep going. I think we got the gist of it, but I think it's been about thirty minutes. Just saying.
Yep. Good with me.
Okay, so then.
I want to thank all the public then for their input. That's helpful to get their feedback.
So, Mr. Gregory, would you like to go into your superintendent's report next since that was moved into that part of the agenda?
Can, yes.
Maybe have a nice drink of water first and.
So I'm going to bring up my present. I got just a brief presentation here. All right. So I'm going to share my screen and then bring the presentation up. And if at this time, if the principals, you know, they can pop on their face and, and, and maybe are just bringing on their video, but maybe stay muted till we get into the discussion. Did everybody see OCS student return discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So just got to get into presentation mode here if I can figure that out. All right. So obviously, the, the, the the next step of where we're headed is, is obviously one that's important to a lot of people. It's important to me. It's important to all of you. And what we do next is, is going to require a level of cooperation. It's going to require a level of understanding, a level of togetherness. Because no matter what we decide here today or in the future, that it's going to cause division within our community and that's unfortunate. I'm certainly trying to do everything in my power to not cause division. But, but obviously it, there has been some. So what do we know at this point? Well, what we know is our current OCS plan called for remote learning from for look, the first quarter with certain special needs students returning back actually this week. So we've implemented that part of our plan. And remaining students beginning second quarter or October fifteenth ish, either in hybrid or everyone. So the current plan is, was to hear what the health department has to say on October first, then make an informed decision on next steps. So a couple of things, obviously, people in their emails reference that the drop from red to orange, you know, was a, the deciding factor, I think in some people's opinion. And, and in my mind, that is not the deciding factor, although it is a piece of data that we need to obviously significantly.
Pay attention. I don't want to interrupt, but in one of your previous presentations, you did mention in there that one of the major deciding.
No doubt about it. No doubt about it. And I'm not arguing the fact that that's a major component. So but what we do know is the Luke County Health Department has not changed their recommendation yet. So we'll see where that goes. So that's, that's a little bit of what we know.
Hal, you're not interrupt, but when you say that, didn't they come out yesterday and talk about?
My presentation at least.
Comment in the slide. So I don't want to lose it because it's on that slide. The, they, at least on the news, it was reported that they said to remain virtual till October first, but they said, so I'm not sure I understand that last comment with what I at least read from the, like, the news media.
I read Channel thirteen's news report. The, to my knowledge, the health board, the Lucas County Health Board has not changed their recommendation. Their board took a vote back in August and made a recommendation. They, to my knowledge, they have not taken another vote to change that recommendation. To my knowledge. So here's what we know about the other districts. Okay. So there was a lot of references as to what's going on around us and, and this is what I believe is happening in the other districts, at least in Lucas County. TPS is fully remote as of today. And I haven't heard any updates related to what their next step is. I know they have allowed sports to start practicing. Washington local school is fully remote as we speak, but they have announced a, a phase in, a hybrid phase in for grades K through six, beginning the September twenty first. And their, their calendar of a hybrid model is, is online. You can look at that. Their kids that are in grade seven through twelve okay, are going to remain remote through October twenty third, at least that's what's presented as of now. Sylvania is hybrid right now, K through twelve, the way I understand it, and I haven't heard any updates on next steps. Springfield is fully remote. I have not heard any updates on next steps. Mommy is fully remote with a phase end to all students. They're going to bring in all students K through twelve somewhere around October fifth, that, that, that week. They're going to phase up, I think into that week. Anthony Wayne is hybrid K through twelve. I haven't heard about any updates. Perrysburg, my understanding is there four days a week, K through six at hybrids, seven through twelve. I have not heard of any updates. Ottawa Hills delayed school just started back. They have their, all their kids in. And then our, our Oregon obviously is fully remote with our next steps in development.
And Hal, on this slide, I think most of these districts, although they are in Lucas County, obviously, you know, are several miles away from us. I would add in that, you know, some of the districts right next to us, Genoa, Lake, et cetera, are in school full-time.
I believe Genoa is hybrid.
Okay.
You'd be wrong.
You know what lake, do you know what lake is?
Five days. Yep. Lake is five days. Yep.
And we're closer to those districts.
So again, we can make comparisons to all kinds of districts. I mean, again, that's, you know, that's the story of the day is comparisons, obviously, but if you look at the state, here's some numbers from the state as of September tenth. So you can see that the metropolitan areas have far more remote school districts than the rural areas with hybrid sprinkled out throughout the state of Ohio. So although there isn't as many remote, we're, we're not in this, you know, completely alone. So here's the surveys. All right. We had through yesterday, we had sixteen hundred and forty-three responses. Of those responses, you can see the percentages there. Seventy-one percent were parent guardians. Fourteen percent were teachers and certificated staff, support staff. We had some students actually chime in and then other, which were, you know, just individuals.
Hal, on that with the students, is that because they, they did it probably from their parents email? We didn't send the survey link to the student. Okay.
They identified themselves as students.
Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't send it to the students' emails.
Nope.
Okay.
So what are the results? You can look at these results in a lot of different ways. And again, there, you know, I'm not saying they're, they're, they're inaccurate, but we did have some, you know, some game plan going on where, where some people were sending the link to, to people outside of our district. And there was, there was a little bit of that going on, but I don't think it probably significantly impacted what we're seeing. But you can look at this and take a look that there's certainly a, a good number that want our students back. Okay. Forty-seven point five percent picked all five days, twenty-two, almost twenty-three percent remain hybrid K twelve, ten percent, almost eleven remote. And then nine percent for four days a week. And then K through six for four days and five days.
I mean, we're close, so close to eighty percent in.
So right here are the statistics when you kind of roll them into combines, which I think where you were headed, Mr. Kennedy. So when you look at K through six, about sixty-six point six percent of those surveyed wanted their kids back four to five days per week. Twenty-two point seven wanted grades K through six in hybrid and about ten point seven, well, it's the same. It's remote. And then seven through twelve is fifty-six point five percent. Little less. Thirty-two point eight and ten point seven. So again, you know, it, it's split. It's, you know, this is one group. This is a group and this is a group. They're all valued community members. This is a group. This is a group. This is a group. So just kind of going through the survey here, keeping six foot distancing in school will be very difficult in a hybrid model, or if all students return, how concerned are you? So again, depending on how you want to look at this, you know, forty-four percent are concerned. But, you know, there's fifty-some percent that are concerned about the six-foot distancing. Six foot is a key component to this decision for all of us. Whether or not we will adhere to six foot or not. So please rate how your childcare has impacted your family to start the school year. So forty-eight point six percent had, had no impact. Some impact and then high impact. So looking at the dates, thirty-seven percent kind of felt like we should, you know, do this in, in, in early October. Some wanted to wait till the quarter. Fifteen, I was surprised at this. Almost sixteen percent wanted to wait till second semester. And then we had about sixteen percent that were mainly immediately now as ASAP, a lot of individuals, but also a few remain virtual until next year and comments like that. So again, clearly there's, there's, there's a, you know, a, a, a group, a majority group that wants to get kids back in school, not deniable.
Cause I wanted to go back to your comment where you said it was split. Just clarify that for me, because when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing ninety percent in school, one way or the other, ninety percent for all the grades, seventy-five, eighty percent by October fifteen, you know what I mean? Like I'm, I'm reading it. I know you're calling them different groups, but when you combine, it's, I'm not looking at any splits. Can you help clarify what, how you're looking at that from a split?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at the data however you want. I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, when you look at remote versus everything else, right? It's all, it's all.
Right. That's what I, that's, yeah, that's what I'm looking, yeah, looking at it like that, whether in person or no.
But I think the bigger, the bigger question isn't remote versus everything else. The question is hybrid versus all in. What our next step is, we're already remote. What's our next step? And when do we do it? That's, that's the question, right?
Right.
I mean, it's, it's not about remote. It's about when do we, do we go hybrid and for how long or do we go all in and when do we do it? So when you look at the student, just the overall parents that were, that took the survey and identified themselves as parent guardians, we had one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two of them. We sent emails out that were successfully delivered. So some don't get delivered because of email changes. Thirty, thirty-four hundred, thirty, you know, thirty-four eighty. So if you just kind of take that number and you look at the, the number that responded, we had about a thirty-two percent parent guardian response rate for what it's worth. From just the parent section of the survey.
Now is that household or is that two parents per child?
If, if there are two emails in, it all is how many emails that the family has in the power school. So it absolutely could be two emails for a parent or it could be one, but what we know is we sent out thirty-four hundred and eighty emails that went out.
Do you know how many emails a, a parent can have in power school is to the max or they, is it unlimited?
There's a lot of different, there's backup emails. There's, there can be, you know, more than, I'd have to check. Nate Quig got me the data on that. And what he told me was these were the number of emails delivered to our parent database. So I can't tell you how many individuals there are. There's this many individual email addresses.
So how do we as a board look at this from a respondent standpoint, right? So we had thirty, do we just assume the other seventy percent don't care?
People draw their own conclusions on that. I, I'm, I was just trying to figure out a way to provide some statistic for how many parents participated.
Do you know by chance, or do we have the statistics on how many kids have an email in there? A parent has an email in there like maybe twenty percent not even have an email in power school so that they're not getting any of our communications?
I think the majority are getting them, but I don't know if it's all, I don't have that data.
Okay. Hey Hal, question on the six feet, because I, I know we, we put the six feet in there, but health officials have said that three, three feet is okay, six feet is optimal, but that they've talked now about the, you know, being in front of somebody for fifteen minutes or longer at a period of time. So they're not concerned about the hallways and the interaction aspect of that.
Yeah, the.
Is there a reason we chose the, the six feet on the survey and not the three feet aspect?
Oh, well, six feet's the gold standard. Everybody knows that. The three feet came from the office of pediatricians or the, the professional organization of pediatric doctors. I forget the exact name from it, the three feet, but the the, to, to just disregard, I mean, six feet is in every language, every, every guidance from everywhere, anywhere. So I mean, every school district built their plans around six feet. Knowing, and listen, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, you know, three feet is one organization's recommendation and, and there's some validity to that recommendation.
I thought, I thought the state had updated to three feet. So the state's plans, recommendations still stipulate at six feet?
Everybody, at least the Lucas County, the Lucas County Health Department and all the guidance I've read from the CDC and the states has six feet.
Okay.
But the pediatricians organization has put out three feet.
Okay.
I, I, I could be wrong on that. I mean, but six feet's the gold standard. We all, we all know that. I mean, but you are right. How kids can contract or, or share is related to how long you're next to someone with or without a mask and what's your distance? And that right now is six feet. So those that are in school and if there is an issue, the health department comes in and goes, okay, were they within six feet? They don't go, were they within three feet? Okay. So here's the teaching certificated data. I did get a text here from Nate Quigg, who's our information's director. Parent, to answer your question, Mr. Kennedy, parents decide if they want to subscribe to the general messages from each email given, mother, father, guardian. Ninety-nine percent of students have a parent email linked.
Oh, so we did get almost a hundred percent participation from, so some of those emails may, may have been represented with three, four, or five kids in the district. So we, we got a full representation of our.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we have enough data to say that.
Well, didn't he just say ninety-nine percent had an email link to a student?
Yes.
From the respondents? So wouldn't that say that we have ninety-nine percent response rate?
I think he said I'm not seeing. Have an email link to their account, which means that parents are linked to the student's account. I don't believe he meant ninety-nine percent did their survey because there's not enough numbers there for that to be. It refers back to my question of how many kids have an email, parents, kids have an email in the system. He's saying ninety-seven percent of our kids have a email in the system by a parent.
And, and the bottom line is this, I'm not trying to use that thirty-two percent for or against any argument. Okay. I'm just trying to show some level of comparison. Okay. But there's no way any of us can say that a hundred percent participated. We did not have a hundred percent participate. We would have had a, a survey of over thirty-five hundred.
No, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you said is that of the four sixteen hundred respondents that they were affiliated to ninety-nine percent of the students.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Okay. So back to, so here's what the certificated teaching staff. Okay, so back to, so here's what the certificated teaching staff does. We had a pretty good turnout in terms of our number. Of, of teaching staff, certificated staff that apply or that filled out the survey. So you can see kind of where they're at. You know, again, very different opinions, forty percent hybrid, five days a week, four days a week.
So they're pretty much, the majority of being in school more than hybrid. Between twenty-two, fourteen and ten. Like at thirty-six.
For the K six group.
And that fourteen has seven, twelve hybrid at the end.
Yep, exactly. And again, I don't want to get all hung up on these numbers. The, the, it's the same as everything else. We got opinions all over the map. In terms of what people think is, is the best way to move forward. Students, we did have ninety-nine. So here's your, here's your stats for the ninety-nine. You know, so, you know, obviously, kids want to be back in school. I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have guessed any differently on this one.
Right. Which I think we, as a board, as a district, as administration. One thing that I have noticed, and I'm not, I'm not blaming us, I'm not placing blame on us, I'm not, but. I have noticed throughout this pandemic is a lot of adults are making a lot of decisions. Without taking the kids' input and what the kids want to heart. And at the end of the day, the reason we do this is for the kids. So I think, to me, that is the most important information that we need right there is that slide based on what the kids want.
That was three percent of the students, though.
Yeah, again, adults have to make decisions for kids. I'm not discounting kids. COVID nineteen pandemic.
Didn't say you were discounting kids, Hal. I, I'm stating, a lot of adults have been making decisions.
I get it. So, okay, so what do we do now? Okay, and obviously, this is the million dollar question, and I have all our principals here. That are available to answer questions and to share maybe some of their thoughts on what to do next. Here's what I believe are, are some next steps. What I believe is we need to announce our final plan sooner than later, and I say with a goal of next Monday at the latest. Not tonight. It's not my recommendation tonight. We need a measured and phased in approach with hybrid and then move to all students. I want to work towards bringing all students into our schools in a measured and phased in approach by November. We need to update and prepare plans and communicate what is happening to our community. You can't do that overnight. There is a lot of moving parts that go on to this that, that we internally experience every single day. We need to prepare then for our OCS Digital Academy, because that's going to explode, whether we go hybrid or all in. And that's okay. But we need to prepare for that. So. That's my basic presentation of, of, of what I think, you know, the surveys and where we need to go. I have some thoughts on what to do, but. We've got our principals here, if, if you want to ask, so maybe let me ask this question. If in two weeks, we were to go all in with all our kids as presented earlier in the meeting. Okay, and principals, please, give us your opinion. Would we be able to do that successfully? Is there anybody willing to step up and say first?
I'll let them speak when we come on, but I'd like to say, we've always said that we could turn the switch in two weeks. Throughout this entire process, as we've presented different options to the community. We have continually said that it would take about two weeks of transition time for us, regardless of what. Modality we go into, because we had a three-pronged plan at the beginning, correct?
And I, and I don't disagree with that. What, what, what I want, though, what I would like to see is. Stop sharing. What I would like to see is, we also said we were going to the end of the quarter, or at least into October.
And, and feelings change when you have to live this on a daily basis with children.
Right, so what, what, what I want to do is stick with our plan as much as we can. Possibly looking at moving up some of the timelines from the quarter for maybe the younger kids. And then do a phased in two-week approach with, with hybrid, moving towards everyone and, and. And see where it goes. That's, that's what, it's in my head right now. And again, knowing that we all want to be at the same place.
So my question on that is. We said our initial plan was come back five days a week, so we were ready in the summer to come back. All in until we hit that big spike after Fourth of July. Are we saying we're not ready now, but we were ready in June?
Jeff, I would say one thing as an educator.
Well, that was a question to Hal, Mike.
Sorry, excuse me.
Um, you know, defining ready has many things. A lot's changed since then. A lot has changed. Are we capable of absolutely coming back? Yes, we are capable of coming back. But there is a lot of emotion and planning and, and processing that goes on with these types of things as well, for families, for kids and for staff. So are we ready? I don't know if we're ready. This is the first discussion and the first time anyone's heard of a different timeline than what we've been talking about. You know, so. Can we do it? Absolutely, we can do it. I have full faith. Just to give you two examples, we got an A plus. At our home football game the other night, because we had the OHSAA compliance officer there. Great shout out to, to all the teams that worked there. We got an A plus from the health department that came in and did a spot check in all our buildings last week. And reported out to our school nurse and said we were one of the best buildings, districts in all our buildings that they have seen.
What did they look at in the building, Hal?
They look at our process of entering and how we handle things, and obviously, they're not looking at distancing and those types of things, because we're remote.
Directional information and, you know, signage?
No, they're not looking at all that yet. We're not back in school yet. We'll have directional information and signage. That'll all be ready to go whenever the date is. I'm not worried about that at all.
But it's not now, is what you're saying.
Uh, it is not now.
Yeah.
We're remote.
So from a parent's perspective, from a parent's perspective, I can tell you with a phase in, and I'm not speaking for the community, I'm speaking from personal experience. A phase in from going remote to hybrid, then to all in. Is not going to fix the issues that my kids are struggling with right now, going two days a week to school. This has been a very difficult month, month with, with my children and my wife and I trying to work at home. And I, I hear those same stories out in the public. And so when I weigh my decisions, I look at the thirty-seven hundred kids that we support and the twenty thousand people in our community. So I guess I would ask to the principals, do they feel comfortable that their staff could open up fully? Before the October fifteenth deadline?
I, I can go ahead and address that if you want, just from a Facet Junior High perspective. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, and just introduce yourself as well. I don't know if everyone who's watching knows who all are.
So Paul Gibbs, principal at Facet Junior High School, and again, just to preface, I, I'm just speaking on behalf of Facet. Although we communicate regularly as principals, you know, I don't live in the other buildings day to day from, from my perspective. And, and again, speaking from, you know, kind of three points, you know, as, as a staff member here. As a community member and as a parent, and I'm seeing it through a few different lenses, so I, I can definitely empathize with the parent piece that. The people are struggling with, because we're having the same struggle in our household. But looking at it from a bird's eye view, and, and just to go back to what was talked about, about, you know, having two weeks to prepare for this. Our mindset has been looking at that October fifteenth, that second quarter, a date from a planning perspective. As kind of our, our milestone. And so we've taken the approach of looking at that from a phased in perspective. I've never considered honestly, as far as our building goes, flipping the switch and going from fully remote to fully all in. So what, what we've looked at as a phased in approach, we've, two things come to mind that, that I have concerns about. With going full in with all of our kids, you know, from remote, directly from remote, without the hybrid approach. Is logistics. Number one, you know, things have changed since July fourth, you know, and around that time when we plan on going five days a week with all the kids. And so we have, we have social distancing protocol, we have safety procedures that we have to follow. We have transitional, you know, things that we're trying to work out. Cafeteria being number one, in terms of just a number of kids in one space at one time. Busting, I can't speak directly to the busing issues, but I know that that's been a flashpoint in terms of other districts, so I know that we'll experience that as well. And to be able to look at all this in theory has, has been nice. But to look at it in practicality and to live it out, I know is going to be another thing. And so to have the, I guess, the, the comfort level that I need, you know, from both an educational perspective and a parent perspective. I would, I would like to see us transition with half the kids to be able to see what that looks like, what that feels like. In this building, instead of having six hundred kids come in at once and trying to, trying to deal with that.
Don't you think that would be confusing to the, and difficult for the parents? Because again, I look at it at the numbers, right? Who do we appease? That's, that's, as a board member, that's always the most difficult thing, right? Because ninety-five percent of the time, you're going to make fifty percent of the people angry. I mean, that's just the reality in the world that we live in, right? So, do I concern myself more with the thirty-seven hundred kids and their parents? Or the two hundred and fifty plus a hundred classified staff and, you know, forty administrators, you know what I mean? So the numbers outweigh, so when I look at it as a parent, the phase in seems like it would be more confusing from a logistical standpoint. For the parents to go to a hybrid mode for two to three weeks than to a fully engaged mode in the building five days a week. I guess my question is why, why that phase in? Why would we need that phase in?
And Paul, before you address, I just want to, want to appreciate your perspective on this, because you do have that multiple parent, admin. And community member, so I, I kind of value your insight on this one. All right, mine kind of echoes Keith. I, I'm trying to understand the difference of having kids in a couple, you know, having half the kids in a couple of days a week and all in. Because either way, you've got kids in, you gotta have the building ready for the kids to be in, so can you expand or explain like what Keith said? The difference of having only handful and having them all in, because the kids are in no matter what.
Sure. Paul, can I chirp, chirp, chirp in and sort of answer this as well? Before I forget what I'm thinking, as I'm trying to watch a soccer game here, and that's why I'm coming to you from my car here. But, but here's the one thing, we do have low numbers and our numbers are going down, and I believe that's for a few things. One is we don't have the mass gatherings of kids. And I think one thing we have to keep in mind, if we bring everybody back all in once, will be that we have to do that contact tracing. In case, heaven forbid, somebody would come up positive, which we know it's going to happen. Sooner or later, it's going to happen when we bring all back. Now, if we bring everybody back in one classroom, how many kids in that one classroom is it going to affect? If we start in that hybrid mode and somebody is positive. And we have half the number of students in that class, then only half those number of students are going to be affected. My kids are walking these halls as well, and I'm concerned about that also. So I'm, I'm looking at it from a parent point of view. How do I keep the kids safe in my building? And that's, that's a very concern of mine, a very big concern of mine is how can we minimize, once we do have that first positive, which. Who knows when that'll be, but probably soon, and how many kids is that going to affect? Once that first positive, and I think that's what hybrid allows us to do, is to bring our kids back in a two-week. Trial period, per se trial, and see where our numbers go. Do they increase? Do they decrease? Where are they? So I think that's what hybrid allows us as well, is it does not affect everybody in the whole building. My two cents, Paul, sorry to interrupt you.
So, so why wait? Why wait on the transition then? Why not start the hybrid as soon as possible? Why wait till the end of the quarter? If we want to, if we want to get that model going and see how our kids, you know, are prepared. Again, we've always said the two-week aspect, we, we had three plans going into the summer, originally started with five days, then went hybrid, then went remote. Shouldn't we be ready to transition to the hybrid immediately?
I, I think it's all a matter of when we said we were going to come back, and I'll be honest with you. We've been focusing, I, I think, at all levels of, of instruction in this remote period. Because we heard loud and clear, the end of last year wasn't the best for the students and may, probably wasn't the best experience for the students. So once we determined that we were going remote, we focused our instruction on that, or, excuse me, we focused our. All our efforts on the instruction, how we could provide that education to our students.
And I think we would be naive if we didn't believe that our numbers were going to increase regardless of whether we go hybrid or, or all in. I mean, it's just, it's the reality of, of the situation. I mean, at, at some point. We, we're, we're going to have to accept them. You look at Perrysburg who had a tick up this week. I think they were less than two percent of their population, and I think they just won a little bit over three percent this week.
Right, and, and there's, there's no doubt, once we get everybody back in the building and start interacting, but I guess. What I was trying to say is that it will only affect half those number of kids, once we do get that positive, instead of everybody in that building.
Paul, can you guys talk about just a little bit, because one of the things we've talked about and why we, we kind of set our, our dates around the quarter. There's a reason academically and grading that we, we, we use the quarter. It impacts grade seven through twelve, probably more than five through six. Which, you know, could you talk just a bit about what, what the impacts would be and what we're trying to accomplish with keeping things consistent for at least the first quarter? So kids have, are all on the same playing field with their.
Sure, we, we, we had, you know, just for, speaking for Fast, and that was going to be one of the things I, I was going to bring up in terms of instruction. And I, I think Mr. Jurisky, you know, said well, as far as the, the health implications with social distancing. You know, the, the, the one thing I would add with that is, you know, there are a lot of logistical things that people don't, from the outside, see that we see every single day. The fact that our, our bell schedule is, you know, worked around us having four lunches and being able to accommodate, you know, three hundred kids. At one time in the cafeteria, now having to scale that back, only bring in half of those kids. We, we would have to revamp our bell schedule, which we have a backup plan for that. But I, but I will say that that does impact instruction, because ultimately, to accommodate additional lunches. Or even to have those kids elsewhere in the building, it's going to accommodate either number one, cutting instructional minutes off of each period. Or it's going to displace classes that are being taught at the time. So that's one thing as far as hybrid goes, to just, you know, to think about those.
Aren't you proving my point, Paul, on the difficulty of the transition, though, of, instead of just going from remote to back all in? Is now you're going to have to adjust your bell schedule for two weeks to make certain that the instruction lines up with the hybrid mode. To then just readjust your bell schedule again to go fully at all in.
Actually, it, it, it becomes worse with full in, because we, we still have to take into consideration social distancing in the cafeteria. And so to bring all those kids in at, at one time, I'd create even more. Lunch times, lunch periods, if you will, to accommodate that, so those.
But again, weren't these plans in place in July when we originally had our plan to be going five days a week?
I, I'm not saying they're not in place. What I'm saying is that I, I would like to see it phased in. We, we have the plans in place, but what I'm telling you is there's going to be a greater impact on instructional time. If we have to have six lunch periods versus four, if that makes sense. Now, if we stick with our four and we have half the kids coming in. We can stay with our four and our time is flexed by only a few minutes here and there, just for transition time. But if we go all in right from the get-go, we, we have to increase the number of lunches just to accommodate the social distancing, the serving time. Because now kids have to social distances during lunch and going through the serving line. It takes a lot longer. So there, there's a lot of factors within that that, that we've considered and we, we have plans for. I mean, they're, they're here, they're all, they're all ready to go. You just don't obviously see them, because we're not, we're not in, in school, you know, session.
The other idea was to possibly give time for these kids to come in and redo and learn school. Over again, the new school, the, the, the new procedures, the new, whether it's lunchroom procedures, whether it's hallway procedures. That we could do on a very controlled way and, and a kind of a step in, phase in approach.
I would say that would be my, my point exactly on the hybrid first would be. A couple of weeks where we could have half the number of kids teaching them the new normal, right? The, the new normal, remember, we were in school, I think, while it last was March thirteenth, and a lot of things have changed for them. And we would be able to teach those procedures in those smaller groups. And, and that would be one main reason why, why I would think that transition would be great.
Okay, but.
Can we switch over to the elementary real quick, because?
Well, hold on, Jeff, because nobody has answered the question of why we couldn't start hybrid then sooner than later. I, I, I understand now what you're saying from why we need the phase in, but.
Right.
There's no answer on why it has to wait till October fifteenth.
Yeah, I was going to get there and just, you know, I'm speaking for Facet only right now. Yeah, I was gonna get there and just, you know, I'm speaking for facet only right now. The reality is our, our teachers, just like Jim said earlier, you know, we didn't put out the best product that we could, you know, based on necessity in the spring. And we've worked really hard on that project, product. And, and I, and I feel like feedback over the course of the past three weeks has gotten more and more positive as time has gone on. And, and honestly, our, our teachers, and I know you mentioned that, you know, about weighing, you know, thirty-seven hundred people versus hundred and fifty people. Um, but the reality is those two hundred and fifty people touch those thirty-seven hundred people every single day in a number of ways. And so I feel like the product they're putting out now, although if you're at home and you're looking at that from that perspective. Yeah, you might have to do a little extra work at night, you might have to go over things, but that.
That's understatement, that's an understatement, Paul. That's an understatement.
I live it, I understand it and I, I empathize with it with everybody out there. But our teachers worked really, really hard to make a better product, if you will. And they've gotten better at that over the course of the past three weeks. And, and I think it's really honestly unfair to say on a, on a dime, you're gonna have to shift now. You just shifted over the course of the past, you know, put the summer aside, because, you know, the summer's the summer. But over the course of the past, you know, four months of your working career, you've had to completely shift that. And now we're asking you in the course of two weeks to completely turn that back, not to what you did before, because it's just not that simple. Now you also, you have the way that you grade, the way that you take attendance, the way that you deliver instruction, the way that you were planning for instruction.
How does grade, how does grading and attendance change?
Well, grading, I, I can speak just for facet. Before, we had up to ninety percent of our grades were, um, could be up to summative. Ten percent could be formative. We shifted just because of what we experienced in the spring to sixty-five percent and thirty-five percent respectively for formative and formative. And now in our instructional guidance documents and our plans, if kids are in person, that shifts back. So there's, you know, I, these are just things that I, quite honestly, and I, I don't expect, it's like any other profession. You know, you don't, not everybody knows the nuances of what you deal with on a daily basis. But these are things that teachers take into account, staff members take into account when they're planning instruction for kids. And how they're gonna weigh things and assignments and how they're gonna weigh homework or academic practice, test, these type of things. Um, and now we're asking them to shift. And, and quite honestly, just speaking for, and I, I think I can speak for Mr. Jurisky here as well, seven through twelve. With us being in a semester system, the, the quarter i- is critical. Because that quarterly grade goes into, it's a factor into the semester grade. Which, you know, I'd say almost half of our kids are affected by that. Because they're either accelerated kids and they're taking physical science for credit, or they're taking algebra one for credit. Or they're taking phys that are health as eighth graders, it's a high school credit. And so when they're looking at end of quarter tests, exams, those type of things, um, to plan for that. Um, under a hybrid, a remote or a in-person, it, it does look different. So.
Okay. And, and I don't wanna, and I don't wanna discount, I understand what you're saying, Paul, and I don't wanna discount the profession. I am by no means, does, I think everybody knows that I have been a supporter of educators the entire five years I've been on this board. But we have all had to adapt in our careers, the private sector, the public sector, everybody has had to adapt. And where it is not working is with our children. It is not working with our children from a remote standpoint. So again, when I go back to what am I weighing my options on, I'm looking at the thirty-seven hundred kids that we service. And I am pleading and asking the educators and the administrators to make that adjustment, make that switch. And help us get our kids back in the buildings as soon as possible.
Hey, Paul, quick follow-up for you.
Yeah, and well, just to answer that, I, number one, I'll preface with, I, if I could wave a magic wand. And it would be completely practical to have kids, all of our kids in here tomorrow. I want the kids here. I mean, we've had a small, you know, uh, number of kids, you know, ten or eleven each day in here. And it's been great to see kids in here, albeit a very small number. I mean, I want them here. I want my own kids in school. But I think from a practical standpoint, um, it, it just needs to be phased in, just for the number of reasons I gave you. So I, I agree with that completely and I, I don't think in any way you're discounting educators or anything like that. I, I don't, I don't take it that way. I think you're trying to, to speak for the community and, and I, I hear what the community is saying and, you know, both sides of that. Just, um, again, just speaking from my perspective in this building, um, I, I would like the kids to come back. Um, I just wanna do it responsibly and I think we can do it in a phased-in approach that's fair to them, fair to parents, fair to, to teachers.
But Paul, quick follow-up and Jim, maybe you might be able to chime in. You guys talked about, you know, adjusting the lunch hours and that would take away from the educational times, cause you gotta have more lunch period. And it would shorten the educational time period. But would it, that still be better than the shortened times they have currently on the Zoom meetings? You know, that's a shortened time period as it is. So would the, you adjusting those be shorter than the Zoom or close to what the Zooms are?
Um, well, just to talk from a high school, we, we, um, we're not gonna lengthen any lunch periods for any extended amount of time. Because we can't, because we need a certain number of hours per class in order to earn a Carnegie unit. So we cannot shorten classes very much shorter than what they already are, maybe a minute or two, which would add a minute to the lunches. So we, we are not, we will still have our six lunch periods and six B and A and B in each fourth, fifth and sixth period. So that's how we get our six, six lunches. I guess my main concern is that just the volume of kids in that lunchroom when we all do come back. In the social distancing, anybody that's been in our lunchroom during a lunch period in the olden days prior to COVID. Knows how crowded that was. Even with we come back hybrid, we're still gonna have to do various things with our lunches to accommodate everybody. When we come back all in, it is, it is really going to be difficult, um, in lunch periods. And that's my A number one concern would be lunches.
Alright, thanks Jim. Paul, do you, can you follow up on that?
Yeah, sorry about that, I was muted. We're, we're not too dissimilar to the high school. We do have our academic assist time built in. And so stretching that or shortening that, stretching, you know, out a little bit, um, you know, helps us with that. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all i- in terms of looking at it from that perspective that, um, you know, that would balance out in terms of instructional time. You know, the kids are getting now. Um, but again, that was just a piece of it, you know, my, my number one concern is, again. Putting three hundred kids in the cafeteria, there's, there's just no way we can socially distance those kids even, even three feet that way. I mean, it's not, just not even possible.
Add a couple of minutes to the beginning, end of the school day to help accommodate some of those issues for a, for a short period of time, temporary?
Well, that's a negotiated agreement question. So that would be, have to be an MOU with, uh, the, the teachers union.
I guess would that help either Jim or Paul and with some of their issues if they had fifteen at the beginning, fifteen at the end, to help accommodate some of that stuff?
I mean, I'm not gonna turn down extra time. Um, but when you look at it over, you know, uh, 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 even if we would go three minutes, um, over three periods. You're still only talking a five-minute increase, basically. Um, so would it help? Yeah, but how much it would help? I, I, I really don't think that much. It, it's just a matter of those kids waiting in line to get their food, trying to get their, keep their social distance. And then one actually sitting down, as we all know, when those masks come off and start to eat. I guess that is, that's the concern.
Again, I just wanna, oh, sorry, Jeff. I, I wanna reiterate. And put back into context what we're trying to accomplish here, and I appreciate these questions. We are not trying to block bringing our kids back. I want everyone to know that, okay? I am not blocking bringing kids back. It's the, 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 the reason we're talking right now is the timeline and what's the first step? Is the first step all in or is the first step a two-week hybrid transition time? I am advocating for a two-week hybrid transition time for both levels. That's all I am doing. You ask, why are we waiting till the quarter? K through six, I am not advocating to wait for the quarter. I am very open to moving that date up. But seven through twelve, I'm advocating to remain at the quarter because of the grading that goes on.
I think that's why I wanted to take the direction of conversation that was to the elementary, cause that's where our parents and our kids are struggling the most. So I wanna kind of hear from them, how soon could we get those kids in the building in some fashion?
Jeff, I would, uh, this is Jeff Strach, a principal at Jerusalem. I would say, uh, you know, certainly having two weeks would put us in a much better situation to go through the logistics of. Again, uh, hallway transitions, you know, lunches, buses, all those things. And we, we're gonna make it work regardless of what the decision is. But certainly having that time with half the kids there, kinda like Mr. Holcomb referenced, is a great opportunity for us to get. Each group of kids trained and ready to go.
Could you get, Jeff, could you get the kids in, say, sooner, like on the twenty-eighth as a hybrid? So that we can get them in maybe four days a week and kind of speed up the timeline for elementaries?
You know, one of the issues we have that I would have with that would be the transition also for the instructional piece with teachers. You know, that is a big change to go from all remote to the hybrid plan. Um, it's gonna require a lot of additional planning on their part. So I guess my thought is if we wanna do it right, uh, we need to give us a little time to do it and we can make it work. Teachers are gonna make it work regardless, you know, whatever we decide. But I think if we wanna do it right, um, having some time is gonna be helpful.
Elementary teachers, um, isn't there not, is there not still? If their classrooms are set up for remote, there's a huge difference to move over to have children in. To get that classroom prepared. It used to take me two weeks. Is that still kind of the mode? It takes a week or two weeks just to set up a classroom for kids?
You know, I think most of the classrooms probably are fairly ready to go for kids. That's not a big issue, but, um, certainly, I think, again, having the time to go through. Um, to get everyone ready is gonna be certainly appreciated.
But Jeff, you talked again about the staff and the transition of cha- transitioning from remote to hybrid and, and. Having that ability to change their, their plans, structure their plans around that. Again, I go back to the, then why, why, why do that for two weeks? Only to then transition or change again around their plans to go back all in?
You know, the, the, um, to me, the big thing is, and I think this is Mr. Hol- Holcomb referenced. This is truly giving the opportunity to get those kids trained so we could do it in a smaller group. Um, make sure they're ready, cause there are a lot of new, new, um, I guess, expectations for kids, whether it's distancing, uh, the mask wearing. There's gonna be a lot of new things that we're gonna be dealing with. So having half the kids there will certainly, um, be a benefit.
So what about taking over the course of a few weeks, taking the student assist day, say? And utilizing that as a training period to go through the protocols, um, that is changing from a lunchroom standpoint. From a hallway transition standpoint, from a bus route standpoint, um, to educating and teaching these children. Um, how to do the right thing to then transition into the back to school. It still accomplishes the same goal, but you don't transition from one to two to three.
So you're saying do that on our, like a Wednesday, what, I guess I'm not sure.
Yeah, so you're over the course of the next couple of weeks before the quarter ends, we utilize those Wednesdays to take A through K. Or whatever, I mean, whatever it may be, whatever the breakdown is to keep it a safe level, to train those kids on the transitions.
Sure, you know, it's one thing to tell the kids what we expect, but truly having them there and, and going through with them, I think is what is gonna be beneficial. You know, the other thing I know Mr. Jurisky mentioned too, with the difference between the hybrid model and having all the kids in, in person. Um, is, it goes back to some of that contact tracing also with the hybrid model. We can absolutely, um, do, I shouldn't say absolutely, we can do real close to six feet between kids in, in each classroom. Um, so if there is a situation to trace who was around that child, you know, you're looking at. Potentially, no one would be, you know, a concern because they'd be far enough apart. As soon as you have a full class, now you're looking at the kids immediately surrounding, that would be a concern. So I think that's probably what some of the other districts are dealing with now, whether it was on the bus or in the lunchroom or maybe even within classrooms. You know, they have a number of kids that are not allowed to be at school for that reason, because they were within that six-feet distance. And that's, I believe, what the health department is telling us.
No, the, the, actually, the governor has come out and said that, you know, as Hal said, the six feet is a gold standard. But that the state department OD is acceptable of three feet.
And is that what the health department is also going back?
Yes.
I would, um, echo what Jeff said. We do have, we have moved furniture out in our classrooms. So we are prepared to do, um, we are prepared to do hybrid. Um, we have the desks spaced out, but I can guarantee you that, um, there will be. A few times that we can guarantee that it will be six feet apart. So that is definitely a concern if you would do all in at once. So if we did have just a little bit of phase in time to get that under our belt, I think we would definitely maybe be able to work with that better. Obviously, if the decision is to go all in, we can work with that as well. We have plans for our cafeterias, we have plans for our playground. Um, so everything is pretty much ready to go. We just have to make that decision of what's that next step.
So again, um, Keith, you keep, you keep mentioning the twenty-eighth, like you're, you're set on the twenty-eighth. And what I'm asking is, can you go to the fifth?
Yeah, I mean, Hal, I mean.
But I know, let us phase it in and let us get everybody back by November, early November. We can get everybody back in a way that everybody feels good about. That it's not being rushed, it's not being mandated, it's not being, it's, it's, we're all working together to get to the same endpoint. And yes, the urgency that you've shared and, and others have shared is definitely there, but it's not there with everyone.
Well, no, to, my personal opinion, November is, is too far away.
That's seven through twelve.
And my kids are in those age brackets and they are struggling with the remote learning aspect. I mean, we're getting grades out when stuff isn't even due with F's and it's creating fights in the household. And I know there are, you know, settings from Schoolology and I wanna thank Tim and, and Paul for talking to my wife and helping her out down off a ledge the other day. I mean, there, so there are, it's just from a parent's standpoint, from the several conversations I'm having. November is, is too far away for those kids and especially for our high schools. I think one thing we don't give them enough credit is, is that they're responsible enough to follow directions. Um, we had a, an event that where they came out and watched the game the other night on the big screen. And they absolutely followed every protocol that was put in front of them. Seventy-five kids there, social distancing with masks on and following the rules. And I don't, I don't think we ever give our kids the opportunity to prove that they can be responsible.
But what we're trying to do is not adjust seven through twelve because of the quarter.
But you just said November, the quarter is October fifteenth.
Okay, November's only two weeks after that. The two-week phase in would get us to the first of November.
I'm saying the two-week phase in prior to the fifteenth. I mean, it's, yeah, obviously I've shared my opinion, you guys know where I stand, so.
I said, the one thing I really haven't heard addressed is the confusion, the stress, the agony on the parents and the families. Doesn't seem like we're taking that into consideration in any of this. I know we are, but all the discussion sounds like we'll do what we wanna do. The parents are just gonna have to adjust on the fly and it's gonna be hectic for you, it's gonna be stressful, gonna have family arguments. But stay with us, we'll get there eventually.
Anybody can interpret, I guess, how we're doing it. If anybody thinks that I or anybody that's on this meeting does not care about our families, it's ludicrous.
And that's why, that's why I'm playing with.
But we also, we are, we are responsible for the education in Oregon City Schools. And we have to make those tough decisions and we have to think through all the bits and pieces and the ramifications of everything we do. So trust me, I've lived it, you know, am living it. So I'm asking for a little bit of patience and this will, we will get through this together. And then three quarters of the year essentially will be, hopefully without any major outbreaks, will be. Back to normal, quote. That's all I'm asking. But two weeks from now to throw everybody in, I, I just cannot support that in any way, shape or form. If there's another piece between what I'm thinking and your thinking and we can get there, I, I'd be great. I mean, I, I, if there's something that we can make it and if we can figure out, give us this week to have more discussions about that whole quarter and grading piece. You know, let me have more discussions about it. So what I'm hearing you say is November feels like an eternity. But so does each day to people that are frustrated, right? I mean, I, I get, each day feels like an eternity.
And that's the majority of the district. That's the seventy percent of the survey that we're looking at.
Well.
Carol, please don't shake your head, that's the reality of the results that we got back.
I wanted, what I wanted to interject was, my concern is if we go in full, five days a week. We have an outbreak and we have to go back to remote, that's harder on people and harder on students than to go in. On the hybrid and then move on to the other. That's what, that's what I.
But the data is not showing us that for those schools that are open. But the data is not showing us that for those schools that are open, the data is showing us that these individuals are being quarantined. So Perrysburg's cases didn't necessarily increase, their quarantine levels increased because they had two positive results at the elementary level. So because they had two positive results, they had to quarantine a hundred people centered around those two positive results. So it's not a shutdown of going fully remote. The way the protocol is written is it's unfortunately. Taking those groups of kids that came in contact with those positive cases and quarantining them. So those individuals would then have to go remote. It's not a district wide shutdown.
But it could be if it, if.
But the data is not showing us that from the schools that are currently open for the past.
How, how long have the other schools been doing this?
Based off. For a month.
How many schools?
Uh, well, you have two weeks at Northwood and Genoa, you have four weeks from Perrysburg, you have.
St. John's.
St. John, you have o- over a month from all of the parochials.
And what, what is there, but I guess that my concern would be how many are in the classroom in those? I know when I taught in a private school, we had like twelve to fifteen kids in a class. So it was easy to social distance. That's something.
Well, that was cardinal stretch, Mike. They've never had a large.
I'm sorry?
That was cardinal stretch. They've never had large enrollment.
Oh, yeah, they did.
That's your choice. In old days, they did. But.
With your approach, we're coming in in November.
Mr. Zavisky, Mr. Shay, Mr. Shay has the floor.
I thought he was done.
No, Mr. Shay.
Okay, I, I'm just hearing from the administrators that the stress that's going to be put on the academic. Structure that we have, our teachers have made lesson plans to work with the students. Our students are, it just seems to me with the, with the emails. That have been coming in, that the students are just finally. Starting to understand the processes, which is all new to them. And it may not be a hundred percent, Keith, as you're shaking your head.
I don't even think it's close to twenty percent that are understanding.
I, I had the luxury yesterday of, of deciding that I should enter into the school buildings and actually see what was going on. And I went into Clay High School, I went into Facet, I went into Coy and into Star. And I got permission to observe what was happening with the teachers and watching the students interact. I was so impressed with what our teachers are doing. Now, it seems to me with the communication that we've had that, that some of the largest concern is that the parents are very stressed. Okay, and I understand it. And they, some of them weren't even understanding the, the guidelines and rules and the regulations on what they were supposed to do. And once the parents were able to share that with the students, the students are catching on a little better. We're going to be in an evaluation process in two and a half weeks at the end of October. I mean, the teachers are ready to test students. For what they've done for this quarter. If we go into bringing and changing the dynamics of what we're doing educationally. In the last two to three weeks of the quarter, we have just told the teachers what they're doing doesn't count. We're going to, we're going to spend the rest of this quarter. And practice for next quarter. And that's not what we need to do. We need to educate our students the best that we can. And this is not, in my opinion, this is not. The greatest thing in the world. I was a teacher for forty-one years, never in my life did I ever dream that something like this would happen. Our parents are going through hell, our teachers are going through hell and our students are. But the teachers and the administrators are requesting a time span which we set up. At the beginning of the summer when we had this problem that developed. Now, I think we need to stick with their decisions and their feelings.
But we also said we could be flexible. We also said we could be flexible.
Can I finish, please? I've been shut down three times and I'm going to finish before you start talking. I'm tired of this crap. It's not a game. We're dealing with education, okay? I've read the letters, I've seen the things, everyone's frustrated. I want to take the recommendation of our administration and our teachers and our faculty. And hopefully this will work. We will be able to focus on what's happening, get. Remote changed into hybrid, changed into full time. Maybe this will go away. I don't see that happening. But with what we have right now, that's the last I have to say. All I'm saying is I would like us as a board to support our administration. In what they've requested in the last twenty to thirty minutes while we've been talking. I think they're educated at a high level to work with students. Thanks, that's all I have to say.
And Mike, uh, to retort to that, I would ask you to go into the house of a parent, single parent trying to teach a. Seven-year-old, a ten-year-old and a twelve-year-old right now in this remote setting as opposed to going into the school where a teacher is live streaming with no students in the building. You will see an extreme difference of frustration.
And that may be, Keith, that may be.
Okay, well, um, I guess that concludes my report. Um, unless there's additional questions. Um, again, I understand the issue. Keith, Jeff, I understand where you guys are at. Mike, thank you for that and, and others. Um, you know, I, I, I think this discussion was, was good. Um. Uh, again, I, I, I have kind of an idea in my mind that I think will work and would, will, will work for all, but I'll, I'll be processing this. But to just flip a switch in two weeks, I, I can't support. Um, I know the anxiousness of folks, but we've got a bigger picture here that we, we need to look at and, and I want to continue to do that. Uh, we will continue to support our families as much as we possibly can. And, and I know our teachers are trying very, very hard and I know many of our parents are trying, trying very hard. And I know they're frustrated, but, but hang in there. We can't let this divide and destroy our community. We just can't have that happen. And I feel like that's starting to happen when we can work our way through this together. I really believe we can and we can get this done with an outcome that we're all happy with. Right now, it seems like it's the, it sound, feels like it's the timeline we're struggling with. So I'm going to process this and, and, and we'll, you know, one of my commitments was to have a decision out no later than next Monday on what we're doing. So again, I'll be obviously working with each individual board member throughout the week. Uh, and, and we'll have something that we can, uh, put out to the public no later than Monday. That's.
But you plan on having a special meeting to have let the board vote on this? You mentioned in your community forum that it was up to the Board of Education.
We, we can, like we said earlier, if the board chooses and they want to vote, we can do that. It's up to the board.
Well, we kind of saw where the board sits on that when we tried to add that to the agenda, so. Unfortunately, Keith and I, you know, voices won't be heard on that, but it looks like it's up to you and your staff and best of luck to you.
Okay. We're all in this together. Again, I understand your position, doesn't mean we can't still work together.
And we can set a special meeting if we need to. That's, that's just putting out the notice and having the special meeting. That's fine. So, um, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to thank the administrators. It's been nice having you in our meeting. Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Okay, so then we want to move on to the treasures report. Mrs. Frus.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd sent the reports out previously. The only thing I was going to really review tonight is I did send out today. The updated, um, permanent appropriation measure. It needs to be in place by October first. The only adjustment at this time. Is I added the Fund Five Ten. That is the, um. Care Fund Reserve, it's for cares, Additional Cares Act. I'd mentioned it to the last board meeting. I didn't even have a fund number for it at that time. We threw the, the application has been made for it, um, and we're waiting to hear back from the state. I can't imagine they'll deny it. But that's the only adjustment at this time. This upcoming month will be when we do the five-year forecast, so there will be future amendments, but. That's all I have, unless you have questions about your, um, reports that were sent out.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, let's have a motion to accept the treasures report.
Don't move.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Shay.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Okay, is there any need for an executive session, anyone? Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? And you need to note, there's an addendum to the consent agenda, which is. Hiring of an extra personnel at Jerusalem for Title One. Okay, not hearing anything to be removed. May I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a quick question if I could.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Um, Hal, what is a temporary COVID bus route? And are these the people that we called back? Last week that are on these? You're on mute, Hal. You're on mute.
Sorry, I was just going to ask Mr. Sandwich to go into that specifically, but yes, these are temporary routes that, um, that we have in place for, uh, time. Mr. Sandwich?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Zavisky, the, the routes will change back to their bid routes. Once we move into a hybrid or a all-in schedule. So in that regard, we had to bid it as a temporary route and it's bid on seniority. Uh, because it has a very short shelf life.
Okay, so these are people we called back last week that are doing these?
No, who we individually called back last week were all paraprofessionals. And so these are truly bidding on the temporary routes by seniority. So. Yeah, these folks were not on the, on the list last week or last.
They, they had to follow the union contract and how they get them. Okay, thank you.
And I was just going to say, we're gaining a really, really great person and a great teacher here in Jody Mason.
Yes, she is wonderful. Very, very proud to have her in the district. Um, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Motion was done. Second roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. To new business, we have a motion to dispose of equipments. A through double S, which are district objects, A through M, from Clay and, uh, item A was from Facet. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on disposal? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Moving on to item, uh, B under new business, it's the transportation contracts. Um, it is with the Hoffman family, the Gargax, the Dubendex and the McDonald family. Those are, um, by law, we must do those. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just not a question, but more of a, just a comment that seems that we're getting more of these and I gotta believe it's related to us being remote with no plan to come back. In full time. So these parents are getting doing best for their kids and finding some place where they can get a live in-person education.
Um, I believe that the, um, numbers used to take up a whole page before. I don't know that there are a whole lot more. They just come in.
I believe, I believe we have far less than we've had in the past, at least at this point.
There's, there's not nearly as, not nearly as many. Yeah, you have the, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. Item C under new business is the motion to approve the following donation. David Novak donated his toolboxes, tools, end mills, drill bits, chucks. High-end indicators and so forth with an estimated value of approximately four thousand dollars. To the Industrial Machining and Engineering Program at Clay High School. What a great donation. May I have a motion to accept them, please?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller.
Yeah. Item D. Item D is a resolution to partially recall and reinstate certain non-teaching employees. And positions that had been subject to a reduction in force. We need that motion. Uh, to add them on as August twenty-fourth, it's recommended that the employment contracts. I'm sorry, it is recommended that the employee contracts associated with those positions be reinstated by to eighty percent. Beginning September twenty-first, twenty twenty, the affected employees are Victoria Riley, Roberta Ferrison and Tanya Fleck. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Discussion, uh, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, Madam President, just clarify again for me today. So if, if this resolution passes and E passes. The difference between E is all employees come back on the fifteenth at a hundred percent. This one is these three employees come back at eighty percent. On the twenty-first. E would supersede D.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
Correct, yes. And the eighty, eighty percent is there, is because they're only working the four days per week.
Not the fifth day, okay.
Um, any, any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. And then we moved on to the, um, addendum. Item E is a resolution to recall and re- reinstate non-teaching employees and positions. That had been subject to a reduction in force. The motion to approve a resolution to recall and reinstate non-teaching employees and positions. That had been subject to a reduction in force on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. It is recommended that the employment contracts associated with those positions. To be reinstated to one hundred percent beginning September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Now you have a motion, please?
Don't move.
A second? Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on this. Um. Hal, are we still in a grievance on this or has that been settled?
No, has not been settled.
So we have grievable items?
Yes.
Um, with the reduction in force that has taken place?
Yes.
Have we, uh, obviously we didn't have a finance meeting, so is this recommendation coming from a finance committee or? And what, what reasoning is for this to take place since we're in litigation with the union right now? On the vote that they've taken when we reduce in force?
Uh, Mike, I can speak to that. It's not, I'm not part of the finance committee, but I requested the addendum due to a, uh, change of mind. Based on my vote from the original RIF, um, to bring these employees back to work, one. Um, because I've learned some new information, uh, that I feel was necessary for me. That didn't help me make an educated decision in my first vote. And secondly, I want them back to work as soon as possible to prepare us to get back into school full time.
So we, we could have a special meeting to call them back at the correct time, too. Um, just as we did with these other three on resolution D is that. Kind of what I'm thinking.
No, I'd like to vote to, I'd like to vote to get them reinstated. It's on the agenda. I would, I would like to vote to get them reinstated immediately.
Exactly, but my question is why do it now and not at a special meeting as we've done with the others?
Because these individuals, uh, unemployment, our original agreement with them was for one day a week so they could collect unemployment. Unemployment is six weeks in the rears. Um, these individuals do not make a whole heck of a lot of money, therefore they are not getting any paychecks from unemployment. They're getting the one day a week from us, but they are struggling to live. And I think it's our responsibility as their employer to help them out in harder times, so. Uh, my recommendation is that we, we take care of the people that live in our community that raise their families here. Um, and, and, and move forward in a positive result regardless of, of the current litigation going on.
None that, I don't, okay.
So yes, we just go to a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Shay?
No.
Mrs. Miller?
Oh.
And Mrs. Muller?
No. Okay, superintendent's report is done. We're moving on to old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? Okay, hearing none, we will move to board committee reports, finance.
No report.
Capital improvement, health and safety.
No report.
Policy personnel, we have one hundred and seventy-eight pages of policy that. Policy Personnel, we have one hundred and seventy-eight pages of policy that I'm still going back through for a second time. They will be presented at the October meeting. Academic?
Um, state report cards came out today and obviously, uh, most districts are rated it. They're not rated at all. I went in and looked at ours today and it is at a not rated. So in case anyone had questions, it's not up as a grade. It's just not rated right now.
Thank you. Legislative? Mr. Shay, legislative?
No report.
Student Achievement, Mrs. Miller?
Uh, nothing to report right now.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, board discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have a, Hal, when we are looking at going back full-time from the Nova standpoint, and can we take a look? Because, you know, one of the reasons that I voted to go fully remote was not just the health aspect, but I just didn't feel like our credit recovery was was truly a a, and a, a beneficial option for everyone, right? For a lot of people, it meets the needs, but for some in our GT AP, foreign languages, things like that. Can we start those discussions of opening up maybe some of the more programs within Nova or looking at the potential of live streaming? And you and I have talked offline of this, but maybe live streaming some of these courses. So those parents that that don't feel comfortable because their kid is immunocompromised or something, have that opportunity for the college preparatory level and not just a credit recovery program.
Yeah, one of the things we definitely learned for sure are some of the gaps in both the Digital Learning Academy and and those types of things. So yeah, I'm absolutely open to seeing how we can make some of those work. Um, you know, I've had further up or a follow-up conversation with Mrs. Shavoni about, you know, the possibility. And so um, I I I think that's just, that's a very honest and and genuine, uh, you know, and and possibly easy to fix, if you will. Certainly, opening up the Nova curriculum is easy. That's a flip of a switch.
Right.
Uh, the live streaming piece, I think if we can keep it to specific programs like you mentioned, would would be a lot easier to to handle for this intermediate period before we are all in.
And I I think that the live streaming, I'd like to flip to the opposite side as well as from the educator. So of the two hundred and fifty teachers that we have, you know, there are a few that are near retirement and maybe susceptible to this disease and have health issues, et cetera. Is there potential if we have an instructor that doesn't feel comfortable in going back to school to where our kids, let's say we're back in five days, right? Hypothetically, it's November, they're not comfortable going back in. Could we present the teachings from that teacher teaching remotely livestreamed to the kids in the classroom?
I mean, again, that's a, that's a, that would be a new program, I guess, a new opportunity we would have to put in place. Can we? Yes. That opens a lot to to planning and to, you know.
And I don't suspect that it's a whole lot of our staff that that feels that way, but I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't know about the individuals. I mean, so I hear.
Maybe one or two that feel uncomfortable or or scared because of their age or what have you. So I I would like to.
Well, I don't know about individuals or their age or anything. What, if what you're saying is those that are uncomfortable, can they work from home remotely? Is that what you're saying? And then?
Yeah, so we have like a teacher's aide in the classroom that's supervising the students, but if the instructor themselves is immunocompromised, that they would be able to do their lesson planning and teaching remote um, from their home, but it would be broadcast into the classroom for the students.
We're, we're already, already doing that, if I'm understanding the question right. Those that are quarantined or out for a specific reason but are capable right now are doing their instruction from home.
Oh, well, there you go. Okay.
Yeah, we've been doing that since the beginning for anybody that has been put into that situation. What we haven't done is just.
But I mean, well, I guess so. What would be different is kids would be in the classroom. We'd need somebody to supervise the children in the classroom.
We would always have a substitute teacher at minimum in those classrooms.
Okay.
For sure. Yep, absolutely, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Gregory, I really want to um, thank you for your leadership and helping us make the hard decisions. Um, you've brought us a lot of information. The decisions are difficult and no matter what you or we decide, nobody's going to be happy. It's it's one of those things where and we can't make people happy right now. Um, society is upset. Parents are upset, kids are upset, everybody's upset, and no matter what we decide, we're not going to make everybody happy. And I'd like to thank you for your leadership. I think you've done a great job. Along with our other administrators, they've really done a wonderful job um, in answering questions, taking care of problems. I know there are detractors and there always will be, but um, you've done a super job and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Muller.
Any?
I just want to add one thing. Um, I don't know if anyone saw the um, special on thirteen ABC News about Coach Stevens um, with the Boston Marathon. They did a great piece on her. And I just wanted to recognize her for her hard work and efforts and running it, you know, obviously it's not in person, but they did a great special on her and I just wanted to recognize her for her great work.
Awesome, thank you. I've not seen that yet.
I have it if you want it.
Yeah, I do.
It was awesome. All over Facebook, too. It was very cool.
She's a great role model for our kids. Great role model.
Yep.
Any other board discussion? Okay, any need for executive session? Okay, um, then we, our next regular meeting is the twentieth, I think, of October. Um, if we need a um, another meeting in between, we can do that.
Can we, can we discuss?
And I'm, I'm coming to it.
Okay.
We, we can schedule another meeting anytime we need them. So um, I don't think we have to schedule one tonight, but if we decide we need one, we can do that. And then we have a discussion of virtual versus in-person board meetings. So who's first?
Well, maybe let, let me kind of facilitate this just because I I I know where everybody's at and and it's been one of those conversations or questions about, you know, because community participation and and all that becomes a real, obviously, barrier in a situation like this. So I've always said, and I think, and really, I think all five board members have been in support of, if we're coming back with kids in any kind of in-person situation that we would come back as a board again. I don't want to speak for all five of you. But uh, my recommendation would be on the regular board meeting in October, if we're back with kids at all, and it is my full intention to have kids back certainly by that board meeting, um, that we go back to our typical in-person meetings. We will absolutely adjust how our layout is to be further apart in distance. But I think in the Clay Learning Commons, we would very uh, easily be able to make that a very safe environment to do in-person meetings. So I would suggest we plan on an in-person meeting for the October regular board meeting.
Fine with me, fine with me unless we go back to red. If we go back to red in the interim, then I I want to stay um, with the uh, virtual, but I I'm, I'm good. If the kids are back, I'm ready to go back.
Sounds good. Do we need to vote on that, or does that just happen?
Discussion.
I, I, I don't think you need to vote. I think we just will plan, you know, when we we can make it in the minutes that the board will return to in-person meetings beginning the regular meeting in October or whatever date it is.
With the caveat.
Two months ago, two months ago, I'd asked um, the capability of continuing to zoom. Uh, it seems pretty simple to me. We put a camera in the middle of the room, pan on the whole board, and we continue to zoom our meetings on the YouTube channel to um, continue to get that community participation and and availability, accessibility to us in our meetings.
Yeah, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. Could, could we, could we have some discussion? I'll have some discussion in between this meeting and next meeting, and it's certainly technology won't be an issue, so the barrier will not be there.
We would need a computer in front of us at that time, right?
Uh, you personally, I don't, you personally would not need a computer. We would just need our camera system set up that.
We're just zooming, okay, we're only zooming.
Yes, zoom out, one iPad.
Right.
Kind of similar like the public access where like the big cities probably do it. You just see the whole room in front.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. It's no different than what we're doing now, but we're just using.
Correct. That's why, yeah, that's exactly right. Correct.
Now, is that going to allow, that's just for them to view, not to interact?
Correct. We would still have people who wanted to do public participation, and we, we'd just be going back to the old way instead of just recording it. Recording it, we would be videotaping it as well.
Okay.
Or live streaming it.
So at that, when we're live, if they want to have board participation, they have to come in and speak?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be my thought.
So it would be livestreamed and recorded and.
Like we're doing now, yep. It's the nat- natural evolution.
Yep. It's fine with me. Any further discussion on those things? Okay, hearing none, how about a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes, and thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time, effort. Good job. Thank you.